Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, September 29th, 2025. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. May I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Scott, second Pete, all in favor? Okay. We are going to convene to executive session. Can I have a motion to convene an executive session? Pete, Joel, all in favor? Okay. We will see everybody back here at about 7:30. Our first, oh, we're gonna do, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. First, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the right, I look, which stands one nation under God, indivisible,天地，just as. Okay. Thank you for joining us. We are going to start with our board comments. Does anybody have any comments tonight?
No.
No? Everybody good? Okay. Superintendent comments?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So, I just wanted to say my appreciation, thanks to all the parents and I would say go back to school. Sorry about that. Let me start again. So, I apologize for that. So, I wanted to express my thanks and appreciation to all of the parents, the staff, the administration. We had several back-to-school nights last week, middle school, high school, and two at Cottle, and the turnout was tremendous. We had standing room only in Cottle both nights, and then also great turnouts at the middle school and high school. So, it's a wonderful thing to see all of our parents engaging in the educational program and to have the tremendous community support for our teachers and our administration as we begin the school year. So, I just wanted to share my appreciation for that. Also, it was before our last meeting, but the guidance department did a nice presentation for the parents of our seniors, kind of touching base about the final steps of the application process. Many of our seniors are making their decisions very soon, so if they have not done already, submitted their final choices of applications. So, the guidance department was on hand. We had probably about 30 to 40 parents that were in there that evening to kind of do the final steps of the application process. So, that was a great piece starting the year, and I know that they've done that throughout the year, in the junior year, and this was kind of the final step of that process. So, kudos to them. And a lot of exciting events coming up here in this homecoming week. So, I look forward to the craziness that is Tuckahoe's homecoming. I hear it's a tremendous event with great community support. The kids really enjoy it, and I look forward to that this week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Comments from the business manager?
I have no comments. Nice, thank you.
Okay. All right. Then we will get started with our presentation. Tuckahoe High School Student Achievement and Assessment Results. Thank you, Mr. Fiore, Mr. De Bellis, and Ms. Doish, for attending tonight. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna flip so that we can watch the presentation.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to present this evening on the student assessment data and some of the highlights of our high school program. It's been great to dive into this work with Mr. Fiore, Mr. De Bellis, Mr. Cosuano, kind of looking at the strengths of our programs, some of our assessment results, Regents exams, Advanced Placement courses. It is an exciting time. As you know, the board's going to be beginning, one of our major goals, I should say, this year is to develop our strategic plan. So, beginning that very shortly with the assistance of our District Steering Team Committee. We're gonna be convening early October. That work will begin, and we'll be providing a much more detailed timeline to the board about those next steps, the community involvement, all of our stakeholders. That will be a part of that journey. And this plan will be developed with guidance from the board, the administration, teachers, and families, and then all the stakeholder input as we continue to set the priorities for the district now and into the future. So, in future presentations, we'll be learning much more about the current changes that are happening with the Board of Regents and the impact of future graduation requirements in New York State. There's a lot going on at the state level that's gonna impact the portrait of a graduate. So, that'll be potentially a great workshop topic here for the board to learn more about, that we can present with some of our staff, guidance counselors, and administration about what does that look like for the next few years. And that's also gonna guide the work of the strategic team, the steering team. So, while the collaborative strategic plan development process will take some time, we are focusing on this year's students, their achievement, how we can make sure that this current year is their best year ever for our seniors, our juniors, sophomores, and freshmen at the high school level. Tonight's presentation is going to provide a glimpse into where we are as a district relating to some of our current programs here at Tuckahoe that are already in place and the direction we see them heading into the future. With the goal of continued growth of student assessment, scores and achievement levels increasing, under the board's direction, the district has made great strides in the past few years in expanding the course offerings and providing additional educational opportunities for all students. We're committed to continuing on that journey and expanding additional rich and robust school learning experiences that engage and challenge all of our Tuckahoe students to reach their full potential. We have a responsibility to challenge students. We have a responsibility to make sure that we provide the supports needed so that every student can reach their full potential. Tonight's presentation will highlight some of our student achievement levels, the student data from various Regents, Advanced Placement courses, as well as many of the programs offered at Tuckahoe High School, which make it a rich and robust experiential and learning experience for all students. Our high school leadership team is gonna be walking through a little more of the data, looking at some of the historical results of our students dating back to the last several years, and then also presenting a number of thinkings and wonderings. As our team develops, Mr. Fiore being new this year, myself as well, we're learning and seeing things firsthand for the first time. It's amazing that we're actually only 16 days into the school year with our new team formulating and that, you know, students are just turning the page and getting the routines in place. So, this is a great time to really dive into the data because the upcoming opportunities that we'll have to work with our teachers to collaborate are on the horizon as we go into October and then throughout the rest of the remaining part of the school year, working with teachers and families and students to really maximize their learning potential. Before I turn it over to the high school team, I want to recognize the tremendous educational opportunities that are already in place here at Tuckahoe and really celebrate many of the things that we have in place for our students, the experiences they have that make Tuckahoe a special place. Doesn't mean that we can't continue to grow and get better, but I think we do have to pay tribute and respect to the great work that is put in place and the experience and the traditions to know where do we build for it in the future. So, where are we going and how do we get there is the quintessential question. Little graphic that I thought was just eloquent of today's presentation is that we're gonna go full steam ahead, and we're gonna do so together, involving all of our teachers, our staff, and our students along that journey. I think one of my biggest priorities as superintendent is really empowering students in their own advocacy and agency of their learning. When students know their goals, when they have their aspirations, they know what pathway they're going to, K through 12, they're gonna achieve at higher levels. So, really embedding that into what we do and how we do it so that our students are part of that journey is gonna be quintessential to our future, our current success and future So, a little bit about just our journey in terms of our courses. Proud to say we currently have eight Advanced Placement courses that our students can take. Again, trying to create additional learning opportunities and more rigorous courses, different learning experiences outside of the Regents' traditional courses. We also have 16 total AP courses. This will come up as part of our programmatic studies, as we're learning about which courses were really successful for our students, which ones were the appropriate level of rigor, the amount of prerequisite skills they need to be successful in these. Now, that's all gonna come back to the data. Mr. Fiore, Mr. De Bellis is gonna talk a little bit about how do we schedule these things more effectively and efficiently in the future. These are all questions that we have as we look at what currently takes place so that way students have a clear pathway to success, whether it's alternating schedules when courses are offered so that we can get good levels of enrollment for each class. And then also, how does that tie into policies that we may have, which encourages students to take different courses? Do we promote students? Is it the prerequisites that stop student achievement sometimes? So, these are all things that we'll be discussing and kind of diving into a little bit more as we look at the data. So, very pleased to say that currently we have over 30 extracurricular clubs, all different levels of interest for students, touching different genres where they're excited to learn, have different experiences. You can see the wide array that we do have that take place during the school day, some after school, but again, increasing different levels of student interest, increasing these opportunities where students can excel and demonstrate their skill and interest levels. So, this is, just again, I included some pictures of our students, different areas. You look at the presentation a little more closely, you see our students just doing excellent things during the school day, being leaders, participating as student GO officers, getting involved in fundraising, being leaders in and out of the school day and their various endeavors. This happens throughout the school year. I've had a chance to see it taking place myself, first place in September, and I'm sure it happens throughout the school year, partnering with our PTA, different civic organizations. Our students are doing amazing things and really excelling on a leadership level. We've got students that are engaging in the arts, from our actors and actresses performing, finding their passions. These are all opportunities that are being offered here at Tuckahoe High School. In addition to the arts, we have the marching band, talented students that are, our jazz band are playing. We have talented students that are in orchestra, a lot of different performing venues, letting kids find their passion. So, again, these are great ways that the district has provided, a wide array. Every student has different interests, and many of ours are doing multiple aspects of these enrichment activities. We've got students that are being recognized for their debate skills, traveling to different schools, engaging in rich dialogue with other teams, practicing their leadership skills on the stage and in a formal way through debate competitions. Of course, our athletics. Over the last few years, 45 athletic teams across 24 different sports. So, this is a tremendous feat, and if you take a look at the part that I find is most interesting was the little caveat of over 74% of our students in grade seven through 12 participate in an interscolastic sport in addition to all of the other activities they're also engaging in. Our students are very busy, they're very engaged, they're taking advantage of the opportunities that the board and the district has put in front of them with great success and at a high level. Tremendous accomplishments for our athletic programs and our academics. So, Section One champions, three New York State Regional Championships, two New York State Championship runner-ups. And additionally, the outstanding awards by Section One, the 2025 Tom Whelan All-Sports Award recipient, and the NISVA School of Excellence. In addition to these accolades on the field and section championships and students demonstrating great sportsmanship and camaraderie together, they continue to make our school proud. The other day, I was at a volleyball game, and the power went out. We had a slight interruption, and our volleyball girls showed their leadership. They stood up with the other team, they sat down together, they worked and collaborated, they played a game together, and then they went out and competed. So, great sportsmanship, great characters being shown day in and day out with our students, which is phenomenal, and it speaks to the culture and the community spirit of Tuckahoe. Quick view of some of our championships last year. Again, students engaging with all of our community partnerships, different programming, working with civic organizations. The list goes on and on. We have a lot of opportunities for students based upon their interests and to get involved where they can demonstrate leadership. Last but not least, the student leaders within our school and community. Some of the, as mentioned about homecoming, these are some of last year's pictures, but again, our students taking pride in their school, taking pride in their school community, joining together with families, really representing our school, and that shows the pride and the character of Tuckahoe that I think many of our students possess day in and day out, and they make us proud in their efforts each and every day. Some of the students that we have, these are the colleges and universities that many of our students that were, that are attending this year from last year's class. You can see it's a wide list of great universities all along the East Coast and throughout the country. These were the ones that our current students are attending. We also, in the last few years, in addition to these wonderful universities and colleges, many times colleges are associated with a certain major, they're associated with finances, right? Sometimes it's a financial decision when you, when you select your college you're making forth, sometimes it's proximity to home, all those things kind of come into a student's decision. But in addition to all of these colleges, we, our students are having access and getting accepted in some of the premier colleges and universities in the United States. So, to name a few we've had in the last few years, Princeton University, University of Florida, University of Michigan, University of Notre Dame acceptances, Vanderbilt University, Villanova, William &amp; Mary, Boston College, Boston University, Bucknell, Georgetown, Lehigh, Miami, and Northeastern, to name some of the prominent universities and colleges that our students have been accepted to, which is fantastic. So, with that said, we will continue to grow and to look to improve as a school and a district. Our leadership team is excited to dive into last year's results and to work with our teachers, our students, and our families to take our programs to the next level and to make sure that every student is challenged, engaged, and successful in learning while at the same time meeting all of our students' social and emotional needs as they take this journey through high school. With that, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our high school team, Mr. Fiore, Mr. De Bellis, and Mr. Cosuano, to highlight some of our current levels of student achievement and success, to go through some of our data. We'll open up to questions at the end, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Fiore.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. We have a number of slides with a lot of data. We're not going to stay and analyze every single slide. We're looking into the data. We're trying to get all of the data. There's a lot of different spots that you have to go to because you can't just look at a few things. I'll just give an example, like we have percentages, we have numbers, there's a lot of things on this particular slide. Some of the slides, we don't have all of the data in one spot. So, when you're looking at a percentage, a percentage can be misleading, especially when you're looking at a small school, right? 50%, you know, when you're talking about two students is very different than 50% when you're talking about 100 students, right? 50 out of 100 could be a problem. One out of two, maybe not as big a problem, correct? So, some of the information we have here, we're gonna still delve into a little bit more deeply just so we can get to some of the root causes. But just looking at the post-high school outcome summary over the last five years, it gives you the year, it gives you the number of seniors that graduated in that particular year, and then the percentages and numbers of where they ended up. So, you could see the, the number of students continues to rise that attend four-year colleges. We still have a number of students who are attending two-year schools, and then we have a lot fewer students who are going into the military, who are going directly into the workforce. And then there's the other category, which could be they never got back to us, they are going to backpack across Europe, they are undecided, they're going to a trade school, they might be going to a school outside the United States. So, there's a number of different options that that other could really imply. But you could see the numbers there for you. Graduation rates over the years. So, what we looked at here, again, we have percentages. The red shaded boxes are, that's any box that is lower than the total number, okay? The total percentage. So, that would be, for me, something that we would need to look at a little bit more closely. So, for example, you see students with disabilities are graduating at a lower rate. Again, we need to look into that number because there are a lot of different pathways for our students with disabilities. So, some of them are on different pathways, and they're on programs that are not going to culminate in a traditional four-year period. Some of our marginalized groups in society as well have lower percentages, and again, we need to look at those a little bit more closely to see how many numbers those really are, and then going back really to see what did those students do? Did they have a plan, and were they leaving for some other reason? And then are economically disadvantaged as well. You know, something that we're really looking to do is trying to make sure that we're personalizing the educational experience for everyone. That's a huge concept of my philosophy and where we need to go because when you personalize the philosophy, you're looking at every single student for who they are, for where they are, okay? There are a number of students who need enrichment, there are a number of students who need support, reinforcement, and supplemental materials, and there's no reason for someone to continue to do what they already know, they should be moving forward, right? And we should be moving people who need the help up to get to where they need to be. So, trying to make sure that we're attracting all of those specialties is something that's a, it's a lot easier said than done, but we have to have a consistent plan for that. This is our college admissions testing. Over the last five years, you could see the, the English scores, the math scores for the SAT, and then the ACT scores on the bottom, and the number in parentheses is the New York mean up against our local mean. So, you could see where we stack up against the state of New York in those categories. We're gonna have this up on the website tomorrow so people can look at it a little more closely if they want to. We're going to go through a quick region summary. You know, we have our passing rates, we have our mastery rates, and I think that something that you're gonna see, not consistently across the board, but in a number of our, of our exams and disciplines, you will see that the, the mastery numbers have dropped a little bit. And again, we really haven't even gotten that much of a chance to work with our staff. So, you know, there, there are a lot of questions that we have, and I'm sure there's a lot of information that we have yet to gather so that we can work on putting together a plan for success and why those numbers might be dipping a little bit. But you'll also see that the numbers, when you compare them to Westchester-Putnam and Rockland County, the numbers, again, for where we are, don't seem like they're dipping terribly. There seems to be a dip across the board. We want to make sure we're not dipping more than other people, right? We want to make sure that we're doing the best we can. Our math scores for Algebra I, again, you could see the passing rate and the mastery rate. The 2019, 22, and 23 were a different exam than 24 and 25, so sometimes there's a slightly different exam that you'll see. Sometimes that changes the numbers in terms of when students take a test for the first time, and then they have to, after that first year, the state will re-center, you know, the scoring chart and how that's scored, so the numbers might change once you get into the second and third year. Again, when you look at the, the mastery rate up against, again, it's, it's the Lyric number, but that's Westchester-Putnam and Rockland Counties. Algebra II, again, you can see the numbers of the students who are tested, just to give you a little bit of perspective in terms of what that percentage might be. The geometry numbers, again, we had Common Core exam for four years. Last year was the first time that the students challenged that particular exam. And again, a little bit lower than, than the area that we want. Living environment numbers. And then living environment up against Westchester-Putnam and Rockland. Earth and Space Sciences was given for the first time last year with those 20 students. Prior to that, it was just Earth Science. So, those were the Earth Science Regents numbers, and then last year, that Earth and Space Sciences. That was an obvious challenge for all students last year with that first administration. You can also notice in the numbers next to the year, you know, sometimes the increase and the decrease and, and how the, the students are choosing their courses. Physics, again, it is a good example of the percentages because look at the number of the students being tested, right? So, you know, every one in, in any direction is going to change the percentage considerably. A number of our, of our students who are seniors end up not taking the physics Regents as well, so that skews the numbers as well. So, all of these little factors are a piece of this. Global history, a little lower again than where we want to be. So, those are the things that we want to look at. We want to try to have some meetings with our teachers to discuss various things that I'm going to talk about at the end in terms of some actionable items and where we want to go, but let's get through the AP scores, and then we can kind of talk about all at one time, if you don't mind.
First of all, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go through AP scores, and what we've done is we've used AP scores that we were able to have a five-year historical data. So, in a second, you'll see what I mean. Like Mr. Fiore said, we will put all of the scores that we have up on the website tomorrow so that you can review them, but through the dedication and, I think, support of our Board of Education, one of the things you'll notice on this slide is that our course offerings have increased drastically. So, we currently offer 16 AP courses. For a school of our size, that's pretty significant. And you can see in 2025, the number of AP students almost doubled. You look at the number of exams that we gave last year, 301, but if you look at that last row, the percentage of students that are taking AP classes, more than half of our students are taking an AP class. So, I think that's something to really celebrate, and again, without the support, without the resources, that wouldn't be possible. Couple of things I'd like to mention about our AP program. We have open enrollment for all students. Not all schools do that for a number of reasons, but we want students to challenge themselves. Don't forget, AP courses are college-level courses, so they're doing college-level work early on. And again, some students do it for different reasons. Some would like to put it on their transcript, some are, again, if you're earning three credits towards college and you do that, you might be able to accumulate 15 credits, which financially is significant. So, students have different reasons, and I think you'll see, having such a growth between 2024 or even the last several years and 2025, we're gonna have a little bit of growing pain. So, we're gonna go through some of the data, we're gonna show some of the scores, but again, I want everyone to keep in mind, we're very fortunate to have a number of teachers that are dedicated, that are very passionate about what they do, and regardless of the student and where they are, they try to get them to where they need to be, and I think that's something that is really special, and we're very fortunate to have that with our teachers. So, this is a list of, again, these are some awards that our students have earned. If you look at AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, AP Scholars with Distinction, that's also increased dramatically. So, if you look at the number, 43 comparative to the, the past four years, I think that's pretty significant. Just to kind of quickly give you a review, an AP Scholar is a student who received a three or higher on three or more exams. An AP Scholar with Honor is a student who receives an average score of at least a 3.25 on all of their AP exams and a score of three or higher on at least four AP exams. And an AP Scholar with Distinction is a student who receives an average score of at least 3.5 on all of their exams, and they have a score, average score of three or higher on five or more exams. So, if you, you look at that, there were 13 students that fall into that 43. Again, I think it is, I think it's a testament to the students that want to challenge themselves, and not only challenge themselves, but also are able to do it and separate themselves. So, I think that's pretty significant. And again, that's through the support of our teachers, through the support of our Board of Ed, our families. I'm also the testing coordinator, so I am typically in here with the students when they're testing, and some students are in here for eight hours, nine hours straight, and that's, that's a lot. So, they're, they're challenging themselves. So, let's go through some of the data. If you look at AP Biology, overall, 2.43 is the average score for 2025, but again, looking at the historical, that number is down a little bit comparative to the past several years. So, one of the tools that we have is what's called an instructional planning report, and that report is given to us by the College Board. That is something that Mr. Fiore was referring to. We're gonna be able to sit down with all of these teachers and individually start to scrutinize the topics, the areas. Where did the kids do very well? Where do they need some growth? And are we able to make some adjustments in terms of curriculum and instructionally and help the students get to, back to where we believe that they're and help the students get to back to where we believe that they're going to be in a short amount of time? AP Art and Design, again, we don't have a a large number of students that do this. But again, it could be anywhere from two to four students. We've had years in the past where unfortunately, some students have not been able to do it. But, you know, art teacher does a phenomenal job, and she really brings them to where they need to be. So we try to offer something for everyone.
The the percentages you see, by the way, are those are the percentages of the students who have scored three, four, or five out of the out of the entire group that it's challenging that administration.
AP Calculus AB, this is probably one of the most difficult courses that the College Board offers. Mathematics is very difficult, and I think we're proud that some students have not only gone to AB, but students have also accelerated themselves and taken Calculus BC. Okay? So one of the additional ways that we support our students is that if a student is not able to fit a course into their schedule, or they just have a passion and they do self-study, an independent study, we will still allow them to take what's called an exam-only. So we still want them to have that opportunity to earn a three, four, or five and potentially earn that college credit. And this seems to be a course where we do have a a small number of students each year that will not only reach AB, but also go on to that BC level. AP Chemistry, again, I'm not going to highlight, I mean, we we'll have all of this up there for you. But we just want to make sure that, again, we're looking at the ones that have a five-year historical data point that we can compare it to. Computer Science Principles, again, Computer Science A would be the next course that goes in sequence. And we've had several students throughout the years that have done that on an exam-only basis. Our teacher typically will support them and will assist them as they're working through that course and serve as a resource for them. But this is the prerequisite that you must take before moving on to that Computer Science A. English Lit, students did very well on this exam. AP Physics, so we found it interesting that for the Regents, we saw there was a dip in in that data. But when you look at the AP Physics and the students that are taking that AP exam, they're doing very well at that level, you know? So that's a wondering, I think, that we have. Are they electing to go into AP Physics rather than taking the Regents-level course? And this is all pieces that we need to look at and that we will work with the teachers and as we start to dive into that granular analysis. AP Italian Language and Culture. AP Psychology. Spanish Language and Culture. AP Government. U.S. History. And then some considerations. One of the additional resources that I think is important to mention, we have two current AP teachers that are also national graders for the College Board. And through the support of the district, we've been able to supplement and send them across the country so that they are grading exams in their content area from all over the United States. Not only is it a phenomenal professional experience, it also helps them gauge and understanding what are the skills? What are the specifics that those students need in order to be successful? And they can see replies from students all over the country. They take that information back, they're able to use it in their instruction, and we're hoping that we can grow those number of stu- the teachers that are able to have that opportunity. But again, it it is, you know, does require resources, requires time away from school, which is difficult, but we we feel very strongly that that's a great experience and that will help them. So that's something that I'm hoping we can continue to grow over the years as well.
And and it's it's all tied to the growth mindset that we need to maintain and push forward. The the research suggests that if you take an AP class, that you have greater success at the college level, just by being in an AP class. So it's not necessarily how you do in the AP class, it's making sure that you're in an AP class. And those students have fared better at college level academically. So that says a lot, that, you know, we're trying to get students prepared to succeed at the next level, then we just want them in the class. It doesn't necessarily mean that everyone's going to get a five. But, you know, maybe someone who wouldn't normally have taken that AP, you know, for them, you know, to get a three, that that's great for them, you know? And those are the types of things we need to consider, that it's not always about a number, because quite honestly, if it were, we can make sure those numbers are all fours and fives, like that, we can. Because we could just put more restrictions on who's in the class. That's not the point. That's not what we're here for. We're here for every single student in the district. Now, with that said, the level of rigor, the level of expectation has to remain consistent in those classes so that we can get all students where they need to be. As I mentioned before, that's part of the personalized, authentic learning experience that we're trying to create. Now, where does that begin? We definitely have some curriculum issues that we need to kind of focus on to to gain a foothold, okay? We need a foundation. Every teacher knows exactly what they're doing, but we don't all necessarily know what each other is doing, okay? And that's what we need to do. We need to have clear curriculum maps. There should be maps for every single course that we offer, and they should all be on the internet, on their website, rather, you know, so that parents and the community can see exactly what's expected at each level. And those maps have to be aligned vertically within the department and then also coming from the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. You know, like, we have to end up, you know, a certain spot so that our our students can succeed in a post-secondary environment. In terms of reviewing the instructional practices, that's part of the analysis of what we want to do with our staff. We've only had those couple of days before school to try and meet with the staff as a whole. And there's so many other things that we're doing on those days that you don't have a chunk of time where you could really focus a lot of attention. We did a little bit, okay? We spent a couple hours, but there's a lot more time that we need. And we're starting, we have we have afternoon meetings and we have faculty meetings, right? The extended day in addition to faculty meetings between PD and some curriculum mapping, some reviewing of those instructional practices, what works best, a sharing of ideas, you know, making sure that, you know, we're providing a variety of activities for our students to learn. They have to have have to have specific student engagement. You know, we have to make sure that we're creating a student voice, you know, that students have choice. There are so many different aspects. You know, we have to have some writing assignments, and there have to be some things that might be a little bit more computer-based. We have to give them a wealth of opportunities in which to shine and grow. Students learn differently, you know, and we need to address those needs that they have. We need to make sure that we're differentiating our assignments, you know, we're making sure that we're, you know, scaffolding our assignments, because it's not just students who need reinforcement who benefit from that. There are a lot of students who benefit from those types of things. A lot of students who could benefit from a graphic organizer or learning a certain note-taking technique. So things of that nature all come through collaboration, through PD that we could do with each other and some of the conversations that we have departmentally. Again, through all this, we're hoping to develop a collaborative philosophy so that everybody's on the same page. I don't know if everybody's on the same page right now, because I don't really know what everybody thinks. Again, we haven't had that time together. So we need to have that collaborative philosophy. What are we doing with the honors classes? What are we doing with the AP classes? You know, are we going to have certain requirements? Like, right now, we have requirements for the honors classes, but AP classes are open enrollment. Seems like a little conflict of interest, right? Like, we need to kind of figure out what we're doing, what's the philosophy going to be, and how are we going to move people forward to where they can be successful? How are we going to fit people into the right space? Again, I mentioned the personalized learning environment already and making sure that we keep students learning. Looking at all of the levels, right? We need AP Honors Dual-Credit CTE Pathway Assessment to understand how are we going to make sure that it is a personalized learning environment for every single student? How are we going to get people where they need to go? Do we need to have an honors program anymore? I don't know. I'm not saying we do or we don't, I'm just saying that's a question. If you have a school that has small enrollment, do we just have an AP and an and a college prep track? Do we need the honors track? And if we do, how are we going to utilize that? You know, at what point are we going to say, well, seven students here, five students here, and 10 students here is no longer feasible, right? Are we doing the best for the students in those environments? So again, I don't have any answers right now, unfortunately. I wish I did. But it's all going to come out through the work that we do collaboratively as a staff. And then hopefully, there's a lot of opportunity for discussions, you know, parent discussions and and getting them involved and the Board of Education as well. You know, we have to look at our course offerings and how that factors into the scheduling process. You know, can we take some of the courses we have now, where you might have a couple classes that have eight kids or 10 kids? And maybe instead, you take those and you join them together and you have a class of 18, well, now you have an extra spot to run a different class. Can that be elective? Could that be something that people might be interested in? Are we running the classes that are preparing students for jobs that we don't know exist anymore? We don't know what's out there. We don't know what's coming up. There's all types of computer courses, there's gaming courses. You know, gaming has become one of the major college majors right now? Like, they're going into different things that didn't exist when I was in college, right? We didn't have it. So like, we have to make sure that we're preparing students for what they want to do. And we might not have all those things, but number one is we have to have a level of rigor that expects critical thinking at a high level. They have to be able to solve creatively, they have to be able to be resourceful to create answers when they don't know the answer. Where can they go? What information can they draw from? What content knowledge could they rear back and come up with something where they could be creative and say, I can get there? I'm not going to look at, I don't know what the answer is, next, and just move on. Like, we have to make sure that they have options. Certain level of that is is a grit and determination as well, like, we need to instill that in our students. There are plenty of courses that we could come up with, that we can challenge our students and make sure that they're learning. The STEM fields, you know, anything that's creative, anything that might be computer, robotics, or a lot of those other STEM classes. There's Project Lead the Way classes that we could bring in if we want to. They start as early as the sixth and seventh and eighth grade, and you could bring those courses in. They're high interest, they're hands-on activities, the kids love them. Again, it just trains the mind to think in a certain way where they can be successful. In terms of scheduling, again, so many questions, right? And I know you don't want to go there right now, but is an AP period day exactly what we need? You know, do we need to change that? Do we need to have an advisory period in there somewhere and maybe shorten a couple minutes off a couple periods and have something where we could do an advisory maybe on a Monday and a Friday? And then that could be time for extra help during the day where students and teachers can meet to go over things? Like, there are many creative things that we could do to put things in place to make sure that our students are in a better spot, you know, to learn and to grow. But we can't expect the learning to stop, we can't expect the growing to stop, and we can't put limits on it. It has to be limitless. We have to say that we're going to go as far as we can go, and we're going to keep on thinking of ideas, fresh ideas, new ideas, engaging ideas to keep people interested and moving in the right direction. Sorry, I was going a little fast there for a while. Got on a run. I think that's all I have.
Thank you so much. That was a really great presentation. I really appreciate it. Lamis Kalswana, thank you for doing Media Night tonight with the kids. Totally understand why you were not here for the beginning. The the kids love Media Day, so thank you. It was really great. And I know that, you know, it's hard to pull all that data together, hard to look at. It was something, you know, we decided to do this presentation because it was a presentation that we haven't done in quite a while. We've done a lot of stuff regarding the high school, just not a look at the hard data like this. So I really appreciate the time and effort that you all put into it. It's meaningful to us to look at it. So just a couple of comments from my part, and then we'll kind of go around the the table and ask. So I just want to point out a few things. One, this school is an amazing school, and it doesn't really matter what the data says because we have graduates here that have gone on to do incredible things. And not only are high-level learners, but even, you know, ones who have struggled, my own family, I have high-level learners and ones who have struggled, who have gone on to do amazing things because of what Takahoe had to offer them. And that is all because of our teachers. They do, they do a great job, and they are always there doing the best they can for our kids. Second, when we talk about the AP classes, Mr. DeBellas, and we talk about, you know, how many we offer. Today at work, I happen to be doing something at Pelham with our AP courses, and so I counted because I knew we were having this presentation. Pelham is double the size we are in every way, in their budget, in their amount of students. We offer the same amount of AP courses. I mean, that's really spectacular for what we can offer our students here at Takahoe. So, you know, I really, I I applaud you and I applaud the previous administration for bringing in all these new programs. It's really, they're great opportunities for our kids. Another thing that you mentioned that is the flexible scheduling and the option to do test-only. Again, not not to talk about just myself, but I'm just talking about an experience that I've had, and I'm sure other families have too, but I can just say it firsthand is we did have scenarios where we needed an extra science class because children were looking at going into a science field in college. And the school was able to offer us online plus AP. And, you know, a time when my daughter wanted to, she felt that she could pass an exam that we don't even offer the class for, an AP class. And I just had a call, Mr. DeBellas, he got that AP exam for us, and she took it and and she did phenomenal on it. So again, kudos to the teacher for teaching at a level of where where you're not even teaching an AP course, but the student can can get a great grade on that. And to you and and the administration for being able to offer that to the students and just having that experience. You know, all when you say that, you know, just taking these makes kids better students, it it's really true. And just last week, we, my daughter was taking her chemistry class in college in a very large university. She's got 500 kids in her her class, and it's a weed-out course. And I said to her, you know, how are you going to do on it? And she said, it's okay, because so far, it's everything I learned in my AP Chemistry course, and I remember it. And she took that in 11th grade. So, you know, it, we are preparing the kids for where they need to be going forward. And so, you know, when you look at numbers and you look at the data and and you get a little, they're really, it's not the whole story. There's so much more here, and there's so much more that we offer the kids. Again, with the sports, we offer just as much as Pelham does. You know, it's it's, and that's just one district, and it's only because I have inside knowledge of it, right? But we offer so much to these kids. And I just, I just want to point that out, that when we're looking at data and and sometimes it can seem a little shocking, it is not the full story. And and our teachers do a great job, our admin does a great job, and I'm really excited to see where we're going to go forward. So that's my comments on it. I do have questions that we'll come back to, but I want to give anybody else an opportunity to have some comments.
I'll just, well said, Allison. I agree with everything that you said. Also, very proud of the fact that we've added so much more APs and electives. And I totally agree with what Allison said about, you know, there being more to the story to Takahoe than just the numbers. And I also appreciate what you said, Mr. Fiore, about people who watch this presentation should, I'm just going to double down on this very important point, percentages when it comes to us can be very deceiving because of how small we are. So that's why you get these wild, you know, variations, because you would think that data would be easier with a smaller district, but it's actually harder. The larger the dataset, the better the data is, right? So we have a very small dataset here in some of these categories. So all of that, I think, is important to to highlight. And, you know, And, you know, I don't want to get into a different topic, but we, when you talked about scheduling flexibility, good segue into something that we're looking into this year, which just one little piece that could help with that is the whole idea of maybe adopting a policy of allowing varsity students to not have to do on PE. We haven't gotten there yet. We're, we're exploring it, but I think that's a potential opportunity for more flexibility in a day and more moving things around for more support and things of that nature. So, just, just wanted to call that out because you dovetails into that pretty nicely. But, look, the only thing I'll say, and you, I'm not going to get into it too much because you appropriately said that you have a lot of work to do in terms of looking into where there are patterns that maybe are a little troubling, that you still have to do the work on us. I'm not going to drill down on all that stuff. The only thing I will say, just, and you're doing, while you're doing that, the thing that just stuck out to me, if I'm just being honest, is not so much that the, the numbers have gone down in recent years with regions, because I do think you're right. I think there is a change in the test. But the one that does, just sticks out a little bit is, is how we compare it to the other districts, because obviously they have the same change, right? So, but again, I'm not overly reacting to that because I do think a lot more to the story, but I'm just calling that out as something that isn't apples to apples, so to speak. So, just when you're, when you're looking into why, just obviously, you know, think about that. But, and the last thing I'll say, last comment I'll make is, on the very first slide, oh, the very, one of the first slides, not the train one, which is cool, by the way, but one after that, with the demographics. You know, at the end of the day, I don't think, we all know this, and I think, I appreciate the breakdown, but when you look at the marginalized or the minority groups being a little bit lower, and then you have the economic disadvantage, that's really the reason, right? I mean, it's the economic, it's the economics. It has nothing really to do with, 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 with the ethnicity. And I would imagine that a lot of those students that fall into those minority are all the same ones that are in the economic disadvantage, at least some correlation there. So, it really just comes down to, and we've all done this, we've all done our research on it, it's pretty obvious. It's, it's just resources, right? It's, 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 it's the economics at home matters, right? So, I would just say, as a small district, and we've said it before, but I would just say it again with some new administration, like, I, as a board member, and I'm sure my fellow board members will feel the same way, but when it comes to budget time, if there's ways for us to help bridge that economic gap in terms of additional support that costs money, that would normally cost money to help those economically disadvantaged students, I'm all ears. I think we're all ears, you know? There's no easy solutions to that, but, but I just wanted to say that because it always comes down to just resources, and some kids have better resources at home than other kids do, right? So, and tutoring and things of that nature. So, if there's ways that we can fill that gap, because it's really a small amount of students, when you think about it, because of how small we are, you know, you have, you have ideas, we're all ears. That's, that's the last I'll say.
I completely agree with everything that you two have just, just mentioned. And yes, for a small school, we, we offer a tremendous amount with what we have. I think that's great. Just to, to go along with, with what you mentioned, maybe some, introducing some more flexibility in the schedule is great, but I believe we have an eight, we have an eight-period date today. I know I've mentioned it in the past, but perhaps could you speak a little bit about, about the pros and cons of potentially going to a nine-period day, which may fill the gaps, some of the gaps that Pete's discussing about?
Sure. So, I've been, you know, if lucky enough is the right phrase, but I've had the opportunity to experience both an eight-period day and a nine-period day. I think you have to look at it in terms of what are the overall number of instructional minutes that students are getting during the course of the day? Contractually, what do we have? Because sometimes districts have more minutes or fewer minutes, which does change some of the considerations, because it'll give you an extra period, gives you an extra opportunity for a class. The class periods are now shorter. So, now you have fewer minutes each individual teacher, you know, to get things accomplished. And, and a lot of students, a lot of teachers, sorry, are, you know, currently working until the last possible day, you know, to get things accomplished, because you seize opportunities when students bring up a point or a question, and you kind of, you know, go in a different direction because the students sort of lead that class. So, you might not get to your full lesson, and then you have to kind of come back tomorrow. So, you do want to do that because you want to give students the opportunity to be leaders educationally. But if there are enough minutes where we can confidently prepare students, then it's definitely something that's a possibility. Again, I would personally, I would put two things up against each other if that were the, the direction that the board would want to go. The, the opportunity of a nine-period day versus the opportunity of an eight-period day with an advisory and, and sort of, well, we call it task, teachers and academic support. So, the, on Monday and Friday, those would be advisory periods. You would have the same advisory teacher for four years, you know, nine through 12. In middle school, it would be three years from six through eight. And Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays would be opportunities for teachers to sign up students, to come and see them. So, if I know that Chris Fiore needs help in English, okay, I need to have him, you're coming to me on Tuesday, we need some extra work. Or if I missed a, a quiz because I was absent, I got to go make up a quiz during that time. If there's a test on Friday, I might go to see a teacher on a Thursday. So, all of that is for reinforcement and enrichment, you know? Either I'm going to continue to learn, or I'm going to get myself where I need to be. So, that's a built-in opportunity, and it doesn't have to be a full period. So, it could be a 28-minute period or something of that nature where you can kind of make something work for you. But it's going to, it's going to, it's going to increase the growth, but it's not going to be the same as having a nine-period day where you'd get to have an extra class. That would be growth. So, that's the difference in the growth that you have to analyze. What do we need and where do we want to go? I will say that sometimes that allows students to take more challenging classes because they know they have the built-in support during the day. Because, again, you saw the statistics of the number of athletes. It was 74% of our students are athletes. Well, you add in clubs, and it goes up over 85%. Of our students are doing something. We're all fighting for the same students at the same time, right? So, after school, I want to have a club. He wants to have football practice. You know what I'm saying? So, and then, you know, it's a different club. Students are just not in one club. You know what I'm saying? If you're in a club, you're probably in two, three clubs and things of that nature. So, I think we just balance the needs, and then we make a decision. I don't think one way is wrong. I think there are different ways to, to reach sort of similar goals, but it just needs to be what we're, what we're looking for. So, I mean, do I think a nine-period day could work? Sure. Again, you need to look at the minutes and make sure that you have enough, you know, meat on the bones there.
Also, to add to that, some, some school districts also implement a zero period, which allows for performing arts groups to take place in the, before the start of school day. Again, we run into sometimes transportation issues, so you're relying on, it's an access, so not every student could get transportation, but many school districts do offer that as an option as well, when students want to take AP courses and don't want to miss instruction because of band or orchestra, or they're performing arts groups or chorus. So, that's another option to kind of look at some different things, creative scheduling.
I do think the phys ed, Pete, that you brought up is a, we should definitely look into. I think it's going to be, you know, for, for those varsity athletes from a certain grade, whether it's ninth starting, ninth or 10th. I think, you know, if you're overloaded with APs and, you know, you're playing a varsity sport that season, that's something we should kind of look into as far as how it affects scheduling and, you know, freeing up that student to participate in, whether it's extra help or just taking additional class, or I think that's, that's something we should really look into, because it can kind of be, I know we like to say budget-neutral maybe, but it's something that we should definitely...
It is something that we, we've already kind of started looking into. We're waiting for the policy committee to be finalized, which I think is tomorrow, is it not?
Today was the actual last day for people to apply or to go into the board committees, so we'll, we'll set a date very, in the very near future and get that policy moving. We already have a draft to present. Mr. Coswana, was that...
Yeah, I could speak a little bit to it. You know, the Commission of Regulations, 135-4, speak about this. The option is there, starting in 10th grade, so you could start this PE option as early as 10th grade. I've been pulling policies, working with Mr. Robertson, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Trebelis, to see what some of our neighboring districts do. There are a good number that offer this. Some start in 11th grade, some start in 10th. It's something that we have to look at our numbers and look at what would best meet the needs of our students here in Tuckahoe, but the ball's rolling with that.
Shall I get anything?
I don't have anything. You guys have said it all.
The hard part, right? I do have a couple, I do have a couple of questions. So, last year, Scott and I had a meeting with existing teachers, and one of the things that came up as a, an issue for them, where they felt made it a little bit difficult for teaching their class, was that some of our academic policies... So, my question is, based on teacher feedback, there are concerns that academic policies, including attendance, late assignments, honors AP placement requirements, and homework expectations were not being enforced consistently, making it difficult to effectively teach and for students to retain information. So, do you think that we should consider changing these policies? And if not, how could we better strengthen the enforcement so that students are held accountable, expectations are clear, and teachers feel supported? And I'm just going to start that off with, the best outcome for students in all situations is where the parents, the students, and the school are all focused on making sure that that student succeeds. And when one part of that kind of lays back and doesn't really do their part, it becomes a challenge. It really has to be that all three are firmly invested in making sure that the student is going to succeed. It can't just be the schools, the school should handle it, or the student should handle it, or the parent should handle it. It's got to be all three on the same page. So, understand that that's where I'm coming from. And, and when, you know, in the absence of that, it doesn't matter what we do. But that was a, a comment from, from teachers, that they really feel that there's a, a problem with the policy and following, following the policies. And is it, do we need to change it? Do we, you know, what do you, what do you think?
Again, I think we have to determine what the philosophy is going to be, that collaborative philosophy, and then we have to put in a, a practice to make that successful. So, I could do the policy any way people want. I personally have moved away from gatekeeping and, you know, making sure that there are, you know, hurdles for people to get over in order to get into certain classes. But the practice that I put in place was to make sure that the counselor, the teacher, the previous teacher, and an administrator are having a conversation with the student and the parent, and everybody's coming together to have a common understanding of what the expectations of that class will be. And the problem really lies in that the teachers, as you mentioned, are so good and are so caring that it's against their nature to leave someone behind, right? So, they will slow down so they can get that student to where that student needs to be. The problem is, the rest of the students that may be able to do it are not moving forward, right? And so, that, you know, therein lies the problem. And unfortunately, if there's a common understanding of what the expectations are, then the class needs to move the way the class needs to move. It's an accelerated course for a reason, and I don't mean that to be harsh. It's like, but you have to put in the time and the effort in order to be successful in that course. You know, we'll, we'll support you in any way we can, but, you know, we can't stop the path of the course and slow down the curriculum in order to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Like, that's not what the course is designed to do. So, I think if people just realize that, then there shouldn't be any problem. I mean, I've never had any problem, really. I know the teachers, when I first started this, were like, "You're crazy. Everybody's going to be, you know, all over the place." And it's really not, because if the communication is consistent and people are doing what they're supposed to do, then it runs, okay? Now, the conversation with the parents in certain cases is like, "Okay, your child wants to challenge this course." Could be AP, could be honors. That's fine. Nobody's going to hold your child back. What you need to decide is, is it better for your child to get a 90 in this course, right? The college prep course? Or do you want to get a 78 in an honors course or an AP course? What would you rather your child do? It could still be a learning experience for your child, but what's the goal? Where is your child going to go with this? Is your child going to apply to four-year schools? They might not want to see the 78. You know, they might want to see the 90 in the academic class. So, that's all part of the conversation and the plan, and again, it's personalized for every single student. Maybe you're not doing three classes. Maybe you're going to choose the one where the student interest is the highest. "My favorite class is English." Okay, well, let's bump up in English this year. Let's see how you do. And then next year, we can add another one, you know? Don't do three this year when you didn't do any last year. Well, now you're starting to, you know, it's going to get a little dry pretty quickly. You know what I mean? So, that's all part of the counseling that I think goes into the whole piece of it. It's not just the instruction. We see the instructional piece, but it's, it's that conversation in terms of what's best for the student and where we want to go.
And it's not an easy conversation to have with a parent, to say, to say, "Listen, I think your son, your daughter, you know, should not be taking an AP class." And, you know, I'm somewhat of a realist, and I'll tell my son, say, "Listen, if you're, if you're not going to get a three or something in that area of this AP, you're better off in an honors class." And, you know, it's a tough conversation, you know, to try, even though you have this open enrollment, but like you said, is it better to have a 90 in an honors and 80 in honors or get a 70 in an AP? So, it's a fine balance, and it's, I think that leans a lot on, obviously, like you said, the administration, the teachers, guidance, and the parents to say, "Listen, you got to be, you have to be real with yourself and your child."
Parents are the biggest.
Right, and, and...
They have this high expectation that, you know, their child could do it all, they could take any, you know, they should be taking these advanced classes. I've talked to students and they, oh, thank you. You know, and they just feel that they should be taking that class, but deep down, they really don't. And, you know, there's that, you know, disconnect between the child and the parent. You know, the parents always want the best for their child, but they don't look at the child, the student. You know, they, they get pushed, and I think there are times that, you know, they, and I speak, parents, really push the child a little too much. I really do. I, you know, I've talked to so many students over the years. That's one advantage I have. And, but they do it. They really, really work at it, and, and that's why Tuckahoe is, you know, really, you know, you can offer so much, and...
It's the advantage, the disadvantages of open enrollment.
It, it really is.
That's a double-edged sword. There's pros and cons to it. And, you know, I think it comes down to the, the school and the parent to help make that decision, help the student make that decision whether or not this is the right class for them. And, you know, it's, it's a tough one. It really is.
It's a big, that's a big role of guidance, right? Guidance should be talking, and this happens, I, I do believe it happens, but there should be a conversation about, to your point earlier, like, what is the overall goal of this child? Is it to get into a very competitive college? Is it, you know, and, and, and what's the most best strategy? So, to me, that really is a big, guidance should play a big role in those conversations, you know?
As long as we keep it very individualized. You know, there is times I've heard, I've heard teachers say, you know, "Children should be taking five APs." Some kids should, and some kids can, and, and really succeed at that. At the same point, you know, you do have some children who struggle, but if they want to take that AP, and then the parents are willing to accept the fact that they, that it's going to be a difficult course, and the child is, knows that this is going to be difficult for them, then, you know, what we're doing and allowing them to take it is the right thing. But there are scenarios where we do have to say, "This is not an appropriate class for my child." And, you know, even if, even if my child wants to take it, if he doesn't do well, it is not on the teacher. It is not on the school. It is because, you know, it just isn't their interest. Sometimes it's just really interest, you know?
But the interest has to be there.
Right, right, right. The child really has to want to do it, and, and they are really difficult conversations. And listen, society is a large part of it. Schools these days will tell you, "You have to take the most rigorous courses in order to get into our schools. We want to see the most rigorous courses, but yet we want to see your GPA high." And, you know, parents are, parents are torn in all these different scenarios.
They're very torn.
But it's, in the end, it's what is going to make your child happy and not stressed, and yet be able to succeed and go on to, to schools. They don't all have to be named schools. There's, there's, there's a seat for every child, to say it nicely.
College admissions counselors, they'll tell you sometimes what made some candidate stand out over somebody else was some experiential learning activity, you know, that didn't have a grade. You know what I'm saying? And now, all of a sudden, that set them apart from somebody, and that was the difference between getting in and somebody not getting in. You know what I'm saying? So, there's so many different options. But just to get to your original point, some of the teachers have, you know, brought that up to me as a concern, that, you know, we have, we have standards, you know, for our honors classes, but it wasn't always followed. And, and that is the frustrating part. So, if you're not going to follow them, then let's just not have them. I don't think they're arguing either way. It's just, let's just have the rules and know what the rules are so that we're all on the same page, which is fair. That's a, you know, it's a fair point.
This particular conversation did also kind of go with the homework policy and that[1793.66] that we were a little too lenient with the homework policy also, and that that doesn't set up students for success once they get to college, which I totally agree with. My own childhood, that was the hardest lesson he had to learn when he got to college, was that the due date is actually the due date. And, and he didn't learn that here, because we do have a very lenient policy, and then we even, we make it even more lenient, because we don't always necessarily follow it. And the other thing was, you know, they felt like excessive absenteeism was an issue. And that, you know, the children just were not attending the class enough to learn the material that they needed to, to learn, you know, for various different reasons. But it, that, that the attendance policy was also kind of an issue that, that needed to be more strictly followed. And that's, that's from the, the-
Right, 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 you know.
That, that was from teachers, right?
Because we run the attendance monthly, right? So tomorrow is the end of the month, you know, so we're gonna run the attendance tomorrow. And, you know, it, it goes by month, and that number that we're looking for continues to increase, because, you know, then, they're already, now they've only been in school for a month, right? And then it's gonna be two months, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, if you look at the state, you're absent twice a month, you're chronically absent. You know, it's only twice a month. So some people have been absent four times already, well, they're on pace for 40 absences, if they continue. You know what I'm saying? I've always used a pretty strict denial of credit policy, even though that's not the ultimate goal, to deny credit, but it's to manipulate that, to use that, to leverage greater attendance, you know? And, and the attendance usually is always tied to an issue. It's not just somebody wanted to sleep in. A lot of times, there's something, there's some other factor that needs to be addressed. We just need to figure out what it is. You know, sometimes you can truncate a schedule based on a family situation. You could do different things. But I've always done makeup time and, and, you know, seat time requirements, whether that's after school or a Saturday school situation from eight to 11, and they come in and they make up, you know, classes by doing the work that they have to do for the courses. And it's never really been a tremendous issue, at least in my history. I'm not gonna say it's never happened, but I think if you hold firm to some of those guidelines and procedures, I think it holds students accountable.
I think also for our district, we're very fortunate that we have the, at least one hour of extra help from our instructional staff at seven through 12. So I think the more that we can encourage or mandate students to attend those, strongly suggest that they, they, when they're struggling or when they need to, that they're taking advantage of the teachers who are after school for those, those hours and that time. That's important data to track as well, the students and their success.
And that does also lead to success in college. I mean, go to office hours, go to, you know, that, building that habit of, you know, go to your teacher before it's a problem.
I wanted to double click on something you said during the presentation, because I had this, a similar thought. No, no, I said, I, I don't even know the answer to it, I just, it was something you hit, and I had a thought about it when I was looking at the data before the present, before, you know, over the weekend, because we, we got to see it a little earlier. And I just had the thought about how great it's been that we've increased the AP so much. But you, but I wondered, is there unintentional, unintentional sort of negative byproduct to that much expansion that fast? And you mentioned growing pains with, with how much APs we've added. And I don't even know how that manifests, not being an educator, I'm just curious to see, to know what you meant by that, because I had a similar thought, like, is there, is there something unintended that's negative about having so many more APs added, maybe to the staff, to, to, to the management of it all in a short period of time? I just wanted to get your, your thoughts on that.
So I think, like we mentioned, you know, because we're so small, every student matters so much when it comes to a percentage, right? And I think we've gotta have historical data to start looking at that. Is it an anomaly, or is it a pattern? And until we start to see, I think, these courses all now having a five-year, or at least three-year, four-year, that's when we can start really looking and analyzing and drilling down. You know, was it just, you know, a, a certain group of students that weren't as strong as another group? Or is it something bigger? And I think that we have to get that data. But I think it's, anytime, you know, a business increases their production, right? You go through certain points where you have to learn to function efficiently from that point. So I think that since we grew so much in a short time, we have to let those processes start to work out. You know, some of the things that we, we're speaking about, you know, Allison, and we have an ad drop period, so that we want students, if they are gonna challenge and they wanna try something, after, kinda like college, right? There's a certain point where you have to pull out, and otherwise, it's no longer a dumb, and it shows on the transcript. So, you know, looking at that, and I think doing an analysis of that overall in the next couple of years is gonna be important. But I, I think when students are starting to, again, some of those AP classes are now being put in in the ninth grade, right? And, and that's a big transition going just from middle school to high school in and of itself, and now you add, you know, the, the constraints of an AP course. And if you think about it, you, you really only have September through April, and then they have to start testing. So you're really two months short, right? So now all of these different pieces, and some students are, are fully capable of handling. Other students challenge themselves and realize, you know what, maybe I shouldn't have done that. So I think that's gonna be part of our process to see exactly how. And this is where I think something that Mr. Roberts had, you know, mentioned as well, maybe we do offer something on a rotating basis. You know, these are all pieces that I think we have to look at, and I think we have to be honest as we start to analyze that, and then also figure out what is the best course and what exactly is it that we want.
I'd like to catch before it's too late with some of these students. That's, that's the biggest thing, you know? They take this class, they get a two, and then it really hurts their transcript going forward when they took the class in the ninth grade or 10th grade, and all of a sudden, like, oh my god, my GPA is, is where it is, because I challenged myself, took this AP when I shouldn't have been in it, right? And whether it's the student, the parent, or whatever, I'd just like to catch this sooner than later to, because that really could affect the student.
And I think the counselors really try to do a great job of that counseling aspect, right?
They'll give you the guidance, you're not, this may not be the right course for you, but, and they do that with my, both of, both of my older kids.
And we're fortunate, the counselors meet with every student nine through 12. A lot of schools, they don't see those kids until they're a junior, you know? And it's already two years on the transcript that, you know, you don't have an effect anymore. We have that benefit of being small, and that's one of our, our pros, right? Is that they can meet with the students early on and say, listen, what is the, you know, what are your goals? What is it that you really wanna achieve? And then start to counsel from that perspective.
Is there, sorry, I'm sorry, Lo, just one quick thing. Is there a way, Scott, that we can, Mr. Bellis, that we can make, sorry? That we could make the, the ad drop period a little bit longer? Because I do feel like two weeks is not that long. And it's funny, because some of my kids are like, the class wasn't hard until the ad drop period was over, and then it was hard. You know, and not intentionally by the teacher, it's just, oh, well, now we're two weeks in, and we're kind of like getting into gear. So is there a way to make it maybe three weeks or four weeks where it's like, you know what, this really isn't for me, and I do need to step away?
So I think we can absolutely look at that. I think one of the considerations when we look at it is, though, if they can't stay in that course, what is the alternative? And are they gonna now be too far behind in that course, right? So that's why we don't wanna create another problem by solving one problem. So I think all of that, you know, but I think, you know, potentially looking at a couple of extra days or an extra week, I, I don't think would be, but we can't go, and I think that was something we learned over the years, and that's why we shortened it, is that we used to have a, a five-week period. But by the time, you know, that class didn't work out, and they go into the other class, we're already past the progress report, and we're about to get into the marking period, and there's no grade on there, so.
Good points, good points.
Excuse my ignorance for one question, but we, we had an AP class that wasn't, I guess, certified by the Board of College Board and AICPA Security. So now the students have to buy the credits, right? It's like, is this-
It's, yeah, $200, and they get four college credits.
How does that differ from an AP class? So what's the difference between these two different types of courses?
So you have a dual-credit course, which means they're getting high school credit, and they're getting college credit. So the teacher has to be certified by the university to teach the course. The teacher has to teach the curriculum that the college is using at that level. And so their certification sort of both ways, and they're basically teaching the college course on a high school campus. And then the students take a test, it's $200 for the test, and then if they get the requisite grade, they have four credits on their, you know, they got a transcript, you know, that they took a four-credit course, that they could then take anywhere, which, again, was, I didn't go into it a lot, but it's one of the things for consideration, you know, do we wanna have dual-credit program here? Do we wanna stick with the AP and keep pushing AP exams? Like, there are benefits to both, right? Colleges like to see AP, right? They know the rigor of those classes. They like to be able to compare students, right, in California to New York, right? They took the same exam, so they could do that comparison. And, but, you know, when you look at the costs of college, right, and you look at some people's financial situation, they could take a lot of college credits if we had dual-credit programs, you know, in junior and senior year, and they could significantly decrease what they would have to pay, you know, when they do go to college, and it would help them out considerably. You factor that into, college board keeps changing, right? You used to be able to get a three, and they took that no problem. Well, now, a lot of them don't want threes, they want fours and fives. Subschools, if it's your major, they don't want that, because now you gotta take their, you know, 101 course, foundational course. You know, they don't wanna give away free money, you know? So everybody wants their piece of the pie, you know, so to speak. So it's, it's only gonna keep getting worse and more competitive. But I do think, you know, we need to know what direction we wanna go in, so that we can look at the different pathways and make sure that students know what those are coming in. Because as you said, they need to be able to plan out, this is what I'm taking here and here, this is what I intend to do. So they can literally map it out, you know, and see what the pathway looks like. Carnegie Mellon is an awesome institution to have four credits just sitting there for you when you decide to go somewhere. Like, there are not a lot of colleges that are gonna say, no, we're not gonna take those four credits from Carnegie Mellon.
Is that the cybersecurity one from Carnegie Mellon?
Yeah.
Carnegie Mellon is known for its cybersecurity. It's top-notch.
And this, I, I think the situation was not foreseen, and we're just fortunate that the teacher who we hired has these credentials. And, you know, I really wanna give her credit, because she was the one that from day one was monitoring this and said, listen, I have a solution. And, you know, proposed it, you know, to us, you know? And it really was a, a great situation that we could have fallen into.
We saw that in the board docs, I was impressed.
And used your assessment of the students in the class to say, oh, these students are way above where they should be. They can definitely do this, and then get the benefits. So, kudos to her.
Yeah, it was a great example where, you know, in a short time, she got to know the students and said, what are their strengths? Are they capable? And, you know, she was able to assess them, and she said, yes, they are. And, and she said, I'm gonna challenge them. And, and I think that it was a great opportunity that, you know, kinda fell into our lap.
That is good, and I'm glad to hear that she assessed the students, because one of the hard parts of dual enrollment is that that is a college grade that will be on your college transcript going forward, and very hard to reverse if you don't do well. So when we talk about, you know, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna do dual-credit or AP? I think the answer is really do both and offer both, because AP, I mean, you're, as long as you're not going into the, the top tier or, or super private, you are, and if you're going into a public institution, they take anything over a three, which is fantastic. So, and not just New York State public, any, most public, like throughout the country. So, you know, you offer the APs, you go in with a ton of credits, and you can graduate early. You offer the dual-credit, and you do well, you can graduate early. Both offer significant advantages to the student to going forward. So I, I don't think it's necessarily a one or the other, I think it's maybe a both. But again, that same conversation of, be careful what you enroll in, because this will have a serious impact.
To go back to that, and Mr. Bellis, what, what you mentioned about one of the great advantages, we have a small school, so guidance has the ability to, to speak with kids starting, you know, at an early age. Is it up to the student to really reach out to guidance? How does that work? Or is it a scheduled thing where it's, it's almost like forced, where you have to have this sort of communication? Because that'll help with, I guess, also going back to the parents and saying, hey, like, do you really want this?
So the counselors focus on the seniors first, because of the deadline. So after seniors, then they'll go to juniors, then to sophomores, then to ninth grade. And typically, there's a document where parents can sign up, and then they can pick a time so that they're able to participate. Clearly, we want the parents in there. So they almost book an appointment. And then, you know, from that point, they'll also start the course selection and start to figure out what are the pathway, or what are the interests that the students wanna pursue.
Got it. So the parents are almost given that responsibility? Or is it, is it, is it-
It's both. Yep, it's both.
I'm glad to hear that you're looking at curriculum mapping, because that, in the meeting with the teachers, was another feeling that they had, was that there was not great, great leadership and cohesion regarding curriculum. And so I'm happy to hear that, that that's, you know, something you guys are looking to work into, and I'm sure they're happy to hear it, too.
Also, or you don't, you finished?
Yeah, yeah. I know I could ramble, sorry.
Not so bad. About the, the curriculum mapping, which I think is obviously extremely important, but also a sense of leadership within each of these subjects, is it, would it be advantageous, I should say, to have like a, a department chair? So that they can sort of, you know, reinforce the continuum of curriculum from middle school through, through high school? You know, being now, we don't necessarily have, I know we're looking for it, but I think that could be maybe a streamlined approach, which would just help bolster, you know, that, that mapping as well. And communication, quite frankly. Because now, I guess, it'd be up to, I guess, the teachers to do that communication and not have someone to relay that information necessarily to, to the upper school, for instance.
It would definitely increase communication. It, it would probably increase the efficiency of some of the meetings that we have, because as of right now, like, we're trying to get to departments and lead them, you know, in small groups. But, you know, we all wanna talk to everybody, you know what I'm saying? We can't all talk to everybody. So we have to kinda, you know, pick our battles and, and plan things out, so that there's guidance in each department, so that they're moving forward. But they're not moving forward in silos, they're moving forward in a department, you know, where now there's some vertical alignment within the mapping that they're doing, because if they just do four maps, they might say, hey, we're done. Well, if the maps aren't aligned, and this one doesn't pick up where this one left off, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't get to where we need to go, then, then we're, we have an issue, and the maps don't really mean anything. So it's not just the mapping, you know, it's the mapping with everything else that goes along with creating, you know, you know, a pretty effective and a pretty rigorous program, you know? Everything leads, obviously, to where we want them to be. Like, you have to start backwards. Like, this is what we want our graduates to have when they leave Tuckahoe. This is how they're gonna be successful in life. How do we get there? You know, and then we kinda start, and you go all the way back. And for us, it would be through sixth grade. So if there were someone, you know, to kind of have conversations six through 12, you know, departmentally, you know, in addition to, you know, things that we do, you know, whether it's teams-wise, or, you know, grade level, things of that nature, I think, I think all of it is important, you know?
So, go ahead, you have a second. One last thing is, you know, we've talked so much about APs and everything, but our region scores. Personally, I would like to see, I feel like 85 and the 100 is more of where we should be headed to. I really don't like when, you know, we settle for the, the 70s and the 65s. It's not just about passing, it is really trying about getting the majority of the kids over into the mastery level. And so I would like to see that. And I'm just, you know, curi, it, it's interesting that our 2019 scores are one-way and then that our 2019 scores are one-way, and then have really fluctuated going up, right? That's a true sign of what COVID did, um, to all students, um, and, and its lingering effects, I think, and, and just to teaching in general. School became a much harder place to be for teachers, for students, for administrators, for parents, after we came back from COVID. Um, and that's, you know, across the nation. But, you know, what is our plan to try to fix that, and to try to get us into that, in, in, into better scores?
I think it's a combination, to be quite honest with you. I think it's a combination of, you know, making sure that the curriculum is tight, that the instructional practices are varied, you know, and inclusive, and, you know, to me, another huge piece of this is the, the lack of, like, grit and, and resourcefulness that the students have, you know, because, again, they were allowed to sit at, not allowed, you know, I'm saying they were kind of forced in a way, right, to sit at home, and, but we couldn't even get them to turn on their screens, you know what I'm saying? So I don't even know if somebody's there or somebody's not there, it's a blank screen. Um, so, there's a lot of learned helplessness, I think, that, that happened, and there's a lot of habits that have to be broken. Um, and there's a lot of collaboration that has to happen, so that we're all pulling in the same direction. And that goes from, you know, the school community, to us, to teachers, to students, you know, and all the support groups that we have. So, um, I don't know that I can honestly give you a, a direct answer right now, until I kind of see, like, okay, the curriculum's great, that's tight, we're good there, okay, we move on to the next piece. And, and again, some of it is also going to be very individual, right? Because his problems might not be my problems. So, a lot of it is personal, and I will tell you that there are places, just like Tocco, and people think, oh, not in a community like this, and I guarantee you, the worst of the worst is still happening. You know, there are still people that are being held out, because they have to go to work for the family, because they're worth more to the family making money than they are coming to school. And that's a travesty. But that's something that very real that we have to fight. How are we fighting that? You know what I'm saying? It's just little things like that, that come up in so many different ways, that makes this job so difficult, you know? Because you truly need a plan for every single student in the building, and how you're going to approach them, and what works for one, may not work for not one other. So, um, you know, you, they need to find a trusted adult, they need all of those things that they can get, so that we could build a team that's going to support this student.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a large reason why people stay at Tocco, is because it's so small, we really do have such personalized attention. Um, you know, and it's, as I said before, all that we have to offer kids is really just absolutely amazing, and it's one of the reasons, I mean, again, so sorry not to bring this to an individual thing, but we actually took my older son, and we did send him to a private school, and then we brought him back, to, he begged to come back, we brought him back, and he had, um, a much better experience being here, with sports, with academics, with clubs. Um, and in the end, you know, he said, I'm going to tell you right now, the work was harder at Tocco, and the teachers cared more. And, you know, and, and it's like, we've got so much to offer, and we do a great job of it, and when you just look at the scores, I don't want people to think that we're not doing what we need to do. So it would just be nice to be able to pull more people over onto the other side, so that when you look at it, it's like, yep, this does match the picture of what, what we're getting.
Okay, one piece. And, you know, I think it goes back to your initial question. We need parents to truly partner with us and to get them to school. And that's something, you know, I speak to parents a lot, you know, and, listen, when they're sick, there's a family emergency, that's one thing. But I think there's too many days, I don't feel like, oh, we have to push them in, they have to be here. And, and I think COVID taught us, more than anything, if you're not here, you're really losing out. And every day matters so much. So, one day builds upon the next, um, so, I would just also really love to make a push with parents, just trust us that we need them here, you know? We need them on time, because these are skills that they're going to need for the rest of their life, so. If, if we can encourage and we can really promote that cooperation and partnership, I think that that will also be a tremendous piece of, of this puzzle.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? No? All right. Great presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you for putting these percentages together in the data.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for sitting and talking with us. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, oh, we have a little bit of business. Sorry, you guys, you guys are excused, sorry. Yep, and, and our business is going to be super quick.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda. Pete, second, Scott, all in favor? Business of the board. Approve budget transfers. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Unified School District approve the attached budget transfers for Medicare reimbursements. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, any comments? No? Okay. Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Unified School District approve a contract with Hudson Valley Charter Services, Inc., for transportation to Sacred Heart University, at an amount not to exceed $1,500 for this one-time service. Uh, a motion? Joel, second. Pete, any comments?
Looks like this came to us from an anonymous donor, so, thank you, whoever that person is.
Yeah, that's a nice call. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Um, personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education approves personnel recommendation items A through E. Pete, first. Second, Scott. Um, any discussion? No? All in favor? Okay. And now we are up to board comments. Anybody have any additional comments?
Go Yankees.
Just everyone have a great, uh, good luck to all of our sports teams for homecoming week, uh, and the weekend, and, uh, look forward to seeing everyone for an exciting, uh, oh, and congratulations to our, our queen in court and king in the court, uh, look forward to seeing, uh...
Sorry, Kai wasn't here tonight.
Yeah, but, uh, thank you to our administrators for putting that together, thank you to Faith, as always, and of course, Rob and, and Ben, thank you very much as well. But, uh, everyone have a great week, and a great weekend, and see one on the field, and the, and the gymnasium, too, for volleyball.
All of our sports.
All of our sports.
And come out to the, come out for the homecoming parade.
Yes, big one.
So much fun.
And try to get the coddle, the young coddle kids there as well, for the, uh, Friday